Ladies and gentlemen, senior management, fellow councillors, we're now going to start this meeting of, where are we? It's just like that.
Special Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, Special Committee of the Whole Meeting. I see that we have quorum. After seeing the adopt, oh, sorry. I'm asleep here. A motion put forward by councillor Han that the agenda for the January 14th, 2019 special meeting of committee be adopted as circulated. Everyone in favor? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. That one carries. And, oh, we have your pecuniary interests, yes. After reviewing the agendas, does anyone on council that have pecuniary interest to declare? No, we do not, okay? Please note that, Madam Clerk. We have Department reports. Community Planning and Development has a report on the retail cannabis, opt in, opt out. Madam Treasury or Planning, Madam Wiens, please continue with your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I know that this has been an important topic for all of you, and I have to say that I've learned quite a bit about cannabis in the last number of months, more than I thought I would ever need to know at this point in time. Anyway, in preparing this report, I've had to put my own personal beliefs and biases aside and really understand the information that is out there. So I hope that what I am going to give you will help you in making an informed decision as you deal with this issue. Certainly, a number of municipalities have opted out of allowing retail cannabis sales in their community, and I think a number of them did that early on and probably without knowledge of the full information of what it means to have retail sales and even what it means in terms of the legalization of cannabis use. So I'm going to give you a bit of an overview of those things and then summarize the report. So as of October 17th, 2018, this past fall, the federal government did legalize cannabis use across Canada. And in that federal legislation, they provided the provincial and territorial governments with the authority to regulate where cannabis will be sold and how it will be used. So the provincial government here in Ontario established the regulatory framework for private retail stores. The provincial government, we know, is committed to allowing private retail stores by April 1st, 2019, and that the provincial government in December did announce that they were going to phase in 25 stores as the initial phase. And that phase-in was as a result of trying to have stabilization in the supply chain for cannabis. So the rules are different in other provinces than they are in Ontario, so when you travel across Canada, you'll find that there are different rules and different requirements with respect to cannabis use. The decision to opt out to allowing private cannabis retail stores must be made by January 22nd, so that's just over a week's time. The provincial government also aligned cannabis use with the Smoke Free Ontario Act. And the Smoke Free Ontario Act is the act that regulates tobacco consumption, and when they brought in the changes in October 17th for provincial legislation, they made amendments to the Smoke Free Ontario Act to include cannabis in that. And so where you can use cannabis is controlled by that. It's also noted that the region of Niagara also has a tobacco bylaw that they will be updating and amending to include e-cigarettes and vaping and cannabis use because right now their bylaw is specific only with respect to tobacco. But essentially, all kind of enclosed public spaces, you're not allowed to use cannabis. You're not allowed to use cannabis in the workplace, not in workplace vehicles. So again, it's the same rules that apply to tobacco apply to cannabis use. Schools, hospitals, those kind of facilities, playgrounds, and public buildings. The provincial government also announced that the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario, known as the AGCO, will be responsible for issuing licenses. The AGCO is a regulatory body that's at arm's length from the provincial government, and they currently deal with all the licensing requirements with respect to alcohol, gaming, and that includes lottery and horse racing. So the intent of legalization for recreational purposes is to protect access to the youth, provide for public health and safety, and to better control illegal sales in the black market trade and illicit activities associated with cannabis use. So this is what's been considered to be the public interest with respect to legalization and why legalization has occurred. You're going to hear me come back to the issue of public interest later on. So the current situation today, recreational cannabis can be legally purchased online through the Ontario Cannabis Store. You have to be 19 years of age. The maximum that you're allowed to purchase is 30 grams or 1 ounce dried cannabis. Access to medical cannabis has not changed, so those rules are still governed by Health Canada, and they did not change with legalization. With respect to retail operations and licensing of retail operations, the provincial government through their regulations has established that there's three components to a retail license. One is a retail operator license, the next one is a retail manager license, and then there's the retail store authorization. All applications for these licenses will be processed online, again, through the AGCO website, and the AGCO will complete their review due diligence on these applications, including background checks. Let me go over what the three components of those licenses are. The first one is a retail operator license. So this license allows a person or corporation to operate one or more retail stores. If you're going to operate more than one retail store, you have to have separate retail authorizations for each store. The eligibility criteria for a retail operator license is that you have to be 19 years of age. And so this also includes if you're a corporation, your directors, your shareholders, and any officers of that corporation have to be 19 years of age. You're not to have a conviction or under certain offenses. You're not to have any connection with criminal organization. You're not to have defaulted on filing a tax return or have any outstanding amounts owing. You carry out activities in compliance with certain laws. That's a certain phrase there, it's got a lot of knots in it, so. You have not made any false statements on the application to the AGCO. You have a business number through the Canada Revenue Agency. And if you are a corporation, not more than 9.9% of your corporation is owned or controlled by a licensed cannabis producer or an affiliate. And you have to, of course, be financially responsible and be able to operate in compliance with the law and have control over the cannabis retail sale. So a license, if a license is refused or revoked, a retail operator license, you have to wait two years to apply again. And a retail operator's license cannot be transferred to another person or a corporation. And the AGCO can also put on conditions on that operator license if they feel conditions are warranted to address certain risks. The retail manager license, this is for people who supervise, manage, or hire employees for a cannabis store. Anyone who manages the sale of cannabis, anyone who deals with compliance issues relating to the sales of cannabis, who buys cannabis for the store or enter into contracts for the store. So if you're involved in any of those duties, you have to also have a retail management license. And the criteria for that is, again, you must be 19 years of age, you must act in compliance with the law, not be convicted or charged with certain offenses, not be connected with a criminal organization, you have not carried out activities that are not in compliance with certain laws, and you have not made any false statements on the application. And then again, if a license is revoked or refused for a retail manager license, you have to wait two years to apply again. And the retail management license cannot be transferred to another person. And also, the AGCO, if they feel that there are any risks, they can apply conditions to that retail management license. So the retail store authorization, this is the third component in terms of licensing. A retail store authorization is required for each store. A person or corporation cannot have more than 75 store authorizations. So again, the provincial government has put a limit on that to control the supply, but also to ensure that there is variety of options there in terms of retail store operators. And then in order to be eligible for retail store authorization, you have to have a retail operator license when the store authorization is issued. So again, you have to meet the eligibility requirements for a retail operator. A retail store authorization, the initial retail store authorization is good for two years, and then it can be renewed, and it can be renewed, again, either for two years or four years. And a retail store authorization cannot be transferred from one store to another. So public notice, when there is a retail store being proposed, public is noticed by having notice posted on the subject lands, as well as posting through the AGCO website. The AGCO allows for a 15-day comment period from when the notice has been issued, and they receive notice with regards to the matters of public interest. And again, those matters deal with protecting youth and restricting access to the youth, protecting health and safety, and preventing illicit activities related to cannabis. So retail store requirements, they have to be located in areas where retail is permitted by zoning. A municipality cannot site specifically zone for retail cannabis use. It has to be in any commercial zone where you allow retail use. It must be a separate store. It can't be a store within a store. It can't be a kiosk in a store. So it has to have its own doors and walls and to be entered into separately. It cannot have an outdoor area. The official cannabis retail seal or decal must be displayed at the entrance, and that way people know that this is a legal store and they're selling legal product in that store. The store authorization must be posted and visible inside the store, and then the hours of operation are restricted from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The area where cannabis is received and stored cannot be accessible to the public. Anyone under the age of 19 is not allowed to enter the store. Employees must ask for identification for any, of anyone who looks younger than 25 years of age. And all employees are required to take approved training by the AGCO on the responsible sale of cannabis. So only cannabis purchased through the Ontario Cannabis Store can be sold at a private retail store, and it must be sold in the same packaging that it's acquired from the Ontario Cannabis Store. So the Ontario Cannabis Store purchases their cannabis from licensed producers. So again, it's not cannabis that's from the black market that's entering the system. All sales must be recorded and payment must take place in the store. So you can't do online sales from the store. The only place you can do online sales is from the Ontario Cannabis Store. Again, you can only sell 30 grams of cannabis at one time. You cannot hire anyone under the age of 19, and there must be information regarding the responsible use of cannabis available in the store. And with respect to the packaging, all the packaging that is on, has to display kind of the THC potency, so that's also packaged from, at the producer level. And so people that will be buying cannabis will know what is the THC of the product that they're buying, and so they'll know better how to use it and how to use it more Retail store can only sell cannabis and cannabis accessories in shopping bags. They cannot sell any other convenience items or any other retail items. That's laid out in the provincial regulation. And all cannabis and accessories must be displayed, so they're not visible by a young person even outside of the store. Cannot be sold from a self-serve display or from a vending machine. And the regulation does identify schools as a sensitive land use and has a minimum distance of 150 meters for schools in terms of where a private retail store can be located. In my report, I had provided a summary at the time of writing the report of the number of municipalities that have opted in and those that have opted out. And what I can advise is, as of today, that number is 46 municipalities have opted out and 123 have opted in. So the phase-in of retail cannabis stores. So in December, the provincial government did announce a temporary cap of 25 store authorizations by April 1st, 2019. Interested parties had to submit an expression of interest to the ACGO by January 9th, and the ACGO conducted a lottery. That lottery was held on Friday, and they drew the names of the people that would be operating or have been chosen to submit now applications. They still need to get their retail operator license approved. In that lottery, the names were chosen, and then there were a number of names that were kind of names on a waiting list. So if the first tier didn't, are not successful, they do have other names that they've already chosen that could perhaps apply. In the lottery process, they divided the province up by a number of regions. And so Niagara was located in what was known as the West Region, and the West Region was allocated seven stores out of the 25. So, and then the regulation also indicates that only municipalities with a minimum population of 50,000 people will qualify for the first 25 stores. So Pelham will not receive a store under the initial phase-in because we do not have a population of at least 50,000. So funding, again, with the legislation introduced in October of 2018, the provincial government also established what's known as the Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund, and it will provide funding to municipalities. And specifically, they've broken the fund up into, this particular fund up into three components. It's $40 million over two years. The first payment of $15 million will happen in this January, and the payments are made based on a household basis. And so in Pelham, we will qualify for $8,838 under that first payment. The second payment will be made after January 22nd, and again, it'll be based on the per household rate. And so in Pelham, if we opt in, the second payment will also be $8,838. For municipalities that opt out, your second payment is capped at $5,000. And then there's a third component of this, and the provincial government has allocated $10 million to deal with unforeseen circumstances. What those are and how that fund will be, or those monies will be dispersed at this point in time, we do not know. The province hasn't released any information with respect to that. With regards to this funding, it's also important to note that funding is also available to the upper-tier governments, and again, it's based on the per household basis. And so in the region of Niagara, if all the municipalities in the region were to opt in, the region would receive $253,478. And then depending on who opts out, that money, that amount would be reduced. Another funding that will be available is with respect to any money that exceeds the $100 million in the federal excise tax over the first two years. The province will provide 50%, of that surplus, but to municipalities, but only municipalities who opted in before January 22nd. If you opt out, you do not qualify for that additional funding. Again, the details around that funding, we don't know at this point in time. We just know that it's tied to an opting in and opting out. If you opt back in after January 22nd, you still will not qualify for any benefits from that funding. So the fund also needs to be used or with respect to implementation costs directly related to legalization, so that money can go towards any increased enforcement against the illegal activities, any enforcement or responses needed for public education, increased paramedic services, increased fire services, or developing procedures and protocols with regards to implementation around legalization of cannabis. So I think what's important is, you know, the policing costs, the public health costs, those are really borne by the regional government. So opting in does affect the amount of money that the region may have that they could also use for costs directly related to legalization. Pelham will also have some costs, particularly around enforcement, whether it's through bylaw enforcement, but also through public education in terms of making the public aware of the proper and safe use of cannabis and where you're able to use cannabis in our So again, the legislation or the regulation identifies what the matters of public interest are with respect to this matter, and it's in particular, it's related to protecting the public health and safety, protecting the youth and restricting their access to cannabis, and preventing illicit activities in relation to cannabis. When the federal government passed legislation for legalization, they also made some corresponding changes to the criminal code, and that provides for some greater tools and ability for the police to make, lay charges and deal with the illegal use of cannabis. So I think, again, in terms of this public interest, the big thing is, of course, the access to the youth, providing a legal and safe product, being able to provide information around the responsible use of cannabis, and being able to better control the illegal activities and the black market trade of cannabis. With respect to the municipal role, the deadline to opt in or opt out of allowing retail sales is January 22nd. If we were to opt out, municipalities can opt in at a later date, but they will not be able to opt out again. Municipalities cannot license. Municipalities cannot specifically zone for cannabis retail stores. They will be allowed in areas where the zoning permits a retail use. The municipalities that opt in to allow private licensed retail stores could consider other factors that influence the decision-making for the AGCO, and those other factors, again, should be tied to those matters of public interest. And if a municipality opts out, the access to funding for policing enforcement, public education is restricted. We will not get that access to funding. So considerations, so consumption is legal, and so the use of cannabis is legal. It's legal in this municipality today, and certainly there are people in this municipality consuming cannabis. The funding is to assist with enforcement, education, paramedic, and fire services. The AGCO has a proven track record with licensing. Public interest, again, is an important consideration. There are sensitive land uses, and the regulation has identified schools as a sensitive land use, and there may be others. There is a wide range of public perceptions and varying degrees of acceptance. We've seen this with the results of the survey that the town did, and that summarized in our report. And then I also want to just point out that the sale of medical cannabis, again, those rules have not changed. That remains still under the purview of Health Canada. So our recommendation is that council opt in to allow the sale of recreational cannabis. That That the AGCO could consider other sensitive land uses in terms of separation distances. And in particular, we feel that the municipal, Meridian Community Center and libraries would be important because those are areas where the youth congregate. And then we recommend that the interim control bylaw be amended to exempt retail sales of recreational cannabis effective April 1st if we opt in. So that is my presentation, and happy to take questions.
Thank you for your report, Madam Director. Does anyone have, council have questions of the director?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The three components, the retail, operation management, and store, could one person have one, have all three of them?
Yes, one person can have all three. If you're a retail operator, and you're the only one doing the management, then you don't need to have the retail management license. But if you're a retail operator and there's somebody else doing some of that management in the store, then they would need to have the retail management license. And then you also need the store authorization.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Through your presentation, are you going to present this other part, or is that just...
That's the staff report that we did. And so this presentation is really a summary of the staff report, but happy to take questions on the staff report.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. When I look at this, I look at all the positive things, but is there a negative impact in our community? And why didn't we report on that negative part? Or the negative impact in our community? Like, you do a great display in trying to sell it to me, but you didn't give, you only gave me half the story. And I know there's another half that we should be able to, you should have presented. And I...
So I think the negative impact is associated with the, you know, the underage use of cannabis right now. We know that in the last number of years, while cannabis was illegal, the acts, the youth usage of cannabis was increasing, and that's a real concern. It's certainly a concern from a public health component. And the monies that are being generated through the illegal or black market trade, as a result, is directly benefiting. And so that's a negative use or side effect of illegal use of cannabis.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just did a survey, and it's called Drug-Free Kids. And it's on the website, and I'm not going to read through all of it. But it says, you know, so some of these, the negative things, addictions, heart and lung complications, mental illness, car accidents, IQ loss, and poor school performance, poor quality of life outcome, and poor job performance. You know, and I think, I think in this report, and I think our citizens should know more of the negative side of the cannabis, the retail cannabis.
Yes, and that certainly is where public health is coming from, because the youth usage of cannabis has grown so much that they're very concerned about those negative impacts. And so if you can better control and better regulate the access to the youth, as well as providing them with information around the safe usage and proper usage of cannabis, that you would be better off in terms of that from a whole holistic education perspective.
Okay. And my final question is through you, Mr. Staff Recommendation. What is staff? And I'm new at this. Is it one person? Is it a person that lives in our community? Is it three or four? Is it senior staff? What is staff? And who made those decisions?
So this report is, was prepared by myself, but I also consulted with senior management team on this report. And so the report has certainly been reviewed by others in the organization, and it was signed off and approved by the CAO in terms of coming to you. And so it is staff in terms of, in this being a planning report, it's planning staff that's recommending this to you.
One final question through you. And I understand that, but why wouldn't we put our names to it? If we have a report and we do it, we own, we own it. And to me, it's important...
My name is on that report. It says it's prepared by me.
Yeah, but you mentioned other people. And all those people that said yes to this, and you're recommending it to us, we should have their names on there. That's all I'm asking. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know there was an online survey taken for the, is there any results for that?
Yes, so that was outlined in my report. There were approximately 707 people that filled out a survey that was posted on the town's website. There were five or six questions that were posed on that survey. And again, it's summarized in the report. The question that I guess is of interest for most people is the percentage that took that survey that said that the town should opt in or opt out. It was 52% indicate, 54% pardon me, indicated the town should opt out, 42% should opt in, and 3% were undecided.
Thank you. Sorry, in the second part of that question, is there any way in that survey that the same person couldn't take the survey more than once?
I'm not sure. I'd have to check with our IT on that.
And then my third part was if the, a person could not even be a resident Pelham and take that survey?
Again, it was posted on our website, so we did not restrict it to anybody other than those that were coming to our website.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Stewart.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In the recommendations, it said the AGCO considers setback from the MCC and libraries. Asking them to do so doesn't guarantee that they will put that restriction on it, the same as they would give a school.
So what, based on the information that I've had and the research that we've had and discussions we've had with the AGCO, if council were to include that in their recommendation, it would be something that they would certainly consider. And they have indicated that you couldn't put so many restrictions on it that the youth would not be able to locate. So the restrictions have to be reasonable and have to be aligned with the matters related to public interest.
So there's no guarantee then? Thank you.
Counselor Hahn.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, so of the folks that may have applied for the lottery, are we aware of any that applied from Pelham for the lottery?
I'm not aware of anyone that's applied from Pelham. The list of the successful names was posted on the AGCO website, and I don't recognize any of the names.
So do we know where perhaps the closest outlet would be to Pelham?
It can only be in a municipality with 50,000 or more. And so here in the region of Niagara, that would be St. Catherine's, Niagara Falls, or Welland.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just more comments on my part as opposed to questions. The amount of money that we're going to be receiving from the municipal government, or from the provincial government is negligible. It's not going to make us, make it or break it. So I don't think the fact that we are going to be receiving money from the provincial government really is that much of a bearing. If we had a population of the size of 500,000 people, now we're talking serious money. But I really don't see that, that that's going to benefit our community all that much. If someone wants to buy cannabis, it doesn't preclude them from going online still, and there still will be online sales. So it doesn't, if a Pelham resident wants to buy, they can still buy online, they get it within two or three days. If they want to buy, they can go to Welland, St. Catherine's, or Niagara Falls. Doesn't mean that we have to have a retail store here in town. The other comment that I'd like to make is, I like your addition of the setbacks on MCC and libraries, but I think we can go much further than that. There are municipalities such as Richmond Hill, Markham, Calgary, that have put in smoking and vaporizing of recreational cannabis in public places bylaws, that I think we need to investigate that further. And I would like to see your recommendation expanded in that regard also.
So if I may comment on that, the regional public health department is responsible for that, and they do have that bylaw, and they are amending their bylaw to include cannabis.
So I'll make one further comment, not trying to be facetious here or whatever, but yes, cannabis is smoking, but it's a legalized substance. I can't walk around the municipality with a bottle of beer and consume it, yet we're allowing cannabis to be able to do that, cannabis users to be able to do that. So I think we need to look at further restrictions. This is not smoking.
Well, the provincial government has aligned it with the Smoke Free Ontario Act, and so that's where the provincial government is giving us the guidance to do so. To go beyond that, I think you would be challenged.
Counselor Bob.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You're saying the age restriction is 25 for smoking cannabis, but when you go to retail...
It's 19.
Sorry, 19. But they're going to ask if you're under 25, right?
Yes. Like at the LCBO, if you are under 25, they ask for your ID.
But when you go in for looking to buy cigarettes, the sign now says 35.
I don't know. I don't buy cigarettes.
I don't buy them either, but I know I've been in the gas stations, and that's what they've got, have to do now. So this doesn't even align with that regulation, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Okay, no further questions. If I could make a few comments. The town poll, and, but it was actually a lot closer than I ever thought it was going to be. When I was out canvassing with the other councillors for the municipal election, it seemed like it was about 90% were against and 10 for, but this obviously proves that that was wrong. And the local paper also ran a poll, and statistically, considering how close they were in the last election, they had the same number of people respond to that poll, to this poll. And again, very close. I believe they were 47 and four, 47 against, 40% against, and 13 not now. So...
I think 13 was undecided.
Yeah, was that undecided? Okay. So either poll, it sure shows that the level in the community is a lot like that. It's, it's about like that, whether that makes any difference or not. It just proves, I don't know what it proves, that do people, if they can have an opinion anonymously, do they say that, yes, we should have it? But if you talk to them on the street, oh, no, you can't have that. It's, it's an interesting discussion to have. But the reality is, is what it is. I think it's a lot closer than what this comes, so definitely a lot closer than what I thought it was going to be.
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment to that through you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, it poses that we don't know if the same person took the poll more than once, could have taken it 10 times, 15 times. We don't know if they all live in Pelham. Those are questions or answers. So I don't think we can put that it's pretty even.
Okay, you're right. Until we knew that...
I think I would have to lean, and I don't know what the rest is, towards what I heard from people knocking on doors verbally.
Yeah, I know, it's two different results. Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, and I think you, I think what out there is that there are, you know, different levels or different degrees of acceptance out there, and that's what we're seeing, certainly.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just another comment I'd like to make. So I think it's important to keep in mind, any money, if you did opt in, any money has to be used for enforcement, or public education, fire, paramedic, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not like you could ever use that money to pay down some debt or put into some other community initiative anyhow. You would basically be using any money that you had to, to put out your, put out the flames of the fire that you've kind of created if you did opt in. So it's kind of like creating a problem and using that money to help alleviate it. So it's not like you can put it towards something else and, and benefit in lowering taxes or some other, you know, some other way.
Yeah, that's for the initial $40 million. It's to be used towards costs directly related to the implementation of cannabis. The other funding that the provincial government announced, which is, you know, the surplus after two years, we don't know the details around that. And so I can't say what that could be used for or couldn't be used for.
Certainly, and the reason I, the only reason I say that is because I have come across only a very select few people that have brought to my attention, and obviously it is incorrect, that, hey, we'd be missing out on a whole lot of money for our town. And obviously, that's really not the case. We'd be missing out on money that if we opted in to, to have public education or more enforcement use against probably, possibly the problem that we created in the first place. So just thought it was...
And those are things that we're going to be dealt, dealing with regardless. Whether we opt in or not, we're still going to have to deal with the implementation issues because there are people using cannabis in our community.
Okay. The whole debate and all questions done? Okay, thank you for the report, Madam. So we have a...
That's your presentation.
Oh, yes. So we have a, a resolution, or a motion put forward by Mike Counselor Trophy, that committee of the hall received the retail cannabis opt-in, opt-out presentation from Barb Wiens, Director of Community Planning and Development, for information. All those in favor? In favor of receiving this for information, just information?
That's, that presentation.
That presentation. So now, no, just read all this.
So, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, this is the recommendation as presented in the staff report.
Okay. So, put, motion put forward by Counselor Wiens, that committee of the hall received this report on retail cannabis opt-in, opt-out. That committee recommend that council opt in to allow retail cannabis in the town of Pelham. That committee recommend that council support the following policy considerations with regards to sitting criteria for retail sales of recreational cannabis in addition to the sitting criteria determined by provincial regulation when providing input to the AGCO. One, a setback of 150 meters from the Meridian Community Center. And two, a setback of 150 meters from public libraries located in Font Hill and Fenwick. And that committee recommend that council amend the interim control bylaw, 4046218, to exempt retail sales of recreational cannabis from the interim control bylaw effective April 1st, 2019. So again, this, the number two is the biggie. Is it against policy to read that, or may I read that number two again?
Read it again.
Okay. The committee recommend that council opt in to allow retail cannabis in the town of Pelham. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay. All those in favor of this motion, raise your hands. Okay, excellent. So the motion...
Ask for the opposed, please.
Oh, oh, any, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Any of those opposed? Okay, excellent. So the motion is lost. And now, because the government of... And now, because the government of Ontario will not accept just a defeated motion, you actually have to vote to opt out. I'll read this. Members of committee generally under parliamentary process, once a motion is lost or defeated, the matter is concluded and no further debate or discussion ensues. Also amendments to a motion presented in the negative are not permitted. For example, if committee had made a motion to amend the opt-in motion to replace, to replace opt-in with opt-out, it would have been ruled out of order. Excuse me. The motion to opt in has been lost. In this instance, staff has been advised that the province will not accept a defeated opt-in motion as being a motion to opt out, but rather this is considered as no decision and would have the effect that the town would in essence be opting in. Rather, the province is looking for a motion specifically stating that a municipality is opting out of retail cannabis sales. In light of this requirement by the province, a motion has been prepared to confirm the town's position to opt out of retail cannabis specifically as follows. This is going to take a while. The committee of the hall for the town of Palham recommend that council adopt the following resolution at their meeting Monday, January 21st, 2019, advising the province of Ontario of the decision to opt out of retail cannabis sales within the municipal boundaries of the town. Whereas the government of Canada has passed the Cannabis Act, which has, which was also known as Bill C-45, as a law that having come into effect on October 17th, 2018, legalized the recreational use of cannabis nationwide. Wait, I gotta, I have to, I have to use the washroom. I haven't been feeling good all week, so how can I-
So we can just take a recess?
Yeah, a five-minute recess, please. I'm sorry about that, but that's what I have to do.
I'm embarrassed. Tiny. Just gavel back in.
Okay. Let us continue. That committee of the hall for the town of Palham recommend that council adopt the following resolution at the meeting of Monday, January 21st, 2019, advising the province of Ontario of the decision to opt out of retail cannabis sales within the municipal boundaries of the town. Whereas the government of Canada has passed the Cannabis Act, which was also known as Bill C-45, as a law that having come into effect on October 17th, 2018, legalized the recreational use of cannabis nationwide in Canada, when combined with Bill C-46, an act to amend the Criminal Code of Canada. And whereas the province of Ontario has passed the Cannabis Act 2017, which has come into force on October 17th, 2018. And whereas the province of Ontario has directed that municipalities must decide by January 22nd, 2019, if they choose to opt out of permitting physical cannabis retail stores as of April 1st, 2019, within the municipality. And whereas the government of Ontario has indicated that if a municipality chooses to opt in, there is no subsequent opportunity to opt out. Be it resolved that the council for the town of Palham advise the province of Ontario that the town of Palham is opting out of permitting, excuse me, physical cannabis retail stores within the town, and that the clerk forward this resolution forthwith to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario and the Ministry of Finance to confirm that the town of Palham will not permit cannabis retail stores to be located within its boundaries.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask for one change, Minister of Municipal Affairs.
Okay. So I'm just going to read this last paragraph again. That the clerk forward this resolution forthwith to the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario and the municipal, Ministry of Municipal Affairs to confirm that the town of Palham will not permit cannabis retail stores to be located within its boundary. Okay. I would now look for a mover of this motion. Counselor Han, and we need a second or no? No. Okay. So we now have a mover for this motion. And then, yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
Is there any debate on this?
Yeah. And is there any debate on this new motion? Okay.
So you can call for a vote.
Yeah, okay. So then we just take, we just need a vote, and this is for the motion to opt out. All those in favor? Okay. All those opposed? Okay, very good. Motion, this motion carries.
Presented for ratification at council on the 21st.
This is the motion that will be presented to council on January 21st for ratification, which is our next council meeting, which is next Monday. Okay?
You have a future?
Yep. Motion put forward by Counselor Wink, that this special meeting of committee be adjourned until the next regular meeting scheduled for July, oh, July, for January 21st, 2019, following council. All those in favor? Okay. Meeting is adjourned.